Barry is volunteered to take David's planning and zoning commission meeting on the 19th if we need it. And then Tom is volunteered to take his library board meeting, so it sounds like he's covered.
Great. Thank you very much. Give it to Miles and he'll be there in a minute probably. He's a brainiac. We're talking about you, you're the brainiac. So before we get started, we kind of have a mixed group of some folks and we may not all know who each other is or where we're from. So I thought we could probably first go around the room and make introductions, so we'll start with you.
Barry Wilson, town board, District 2.
Jerry Walker.
Planning Commission?
Ian McCarter, Town Attorney.
Jimmy Allen, Town Manager.
Kelly Hall, Planning Commission.
Ken Betts, Town Board.
Tom Jones, Town Board, District 5.
Paul Renemeier, Town Board.
Miles Baker, Town Board.
Scott Ballston, Planning Department.
Carla Mulan, Planning Department.
Jonathan Thornhill, Water Resources.
Sidney Charman, Planning Commission.
Eric Luthus, Parks, Parks and Culture.
Paul Hurbach, Planning Department.
Hey, and I'm Mayor Kristi Melendez. And so we will get started tonight with our town board work session for Monday, September 10th. And our first item is going to be leading that, which one is it? Paul? We've got to have a code update concerning landscape standards, Chapter 17 through subdivisions. Paul?
Thank you. So we're excited to get some of these code revisions in front of us. We started the process a while back and we've taken on more of that from the consultant. Landscaping is one of the first items we wanted to get from you because it is one of the hopefully easier items. We're not proposing any drastic changes early. We think that the current standards have worked pretty well in terms of you drive around town and there's good landscaping and good settlements that looks nice. There are a few items we wanted to address. One is just reorganizing the standards to be easier to understand and apply. The second is to expand and refine the buffer yard requirements, and I'll get into that more in a bit. To better address water conservation in landscaping and also just miscellaneous other minor clarifications or modifications. So the reorganization. The code's currently a lot of, it's a lot of text. So the example on the left is just an excerpt from the current standards. It's got a lot of different subsections with different components of different landscape pieces. And it makes it kind of easy for consultants or even staff that's not as familiar with the code to overlook one section. Almost go through the whole document to find different parts. So one approach we've taken is creating a chart, the one on the right, that would, it would list, there's eight required components of landscaping. So that's one effort we've made. I don't know how, how well you can read this, but it's, it would also be illustrated in a chart or a diagram kind of like this. This is a rough draft, but just trying to show the different components of landscaping. So you can quickly look at that and see what we need to address. So those different components are the tree lawn, which is between the sidewalk and the street. And you typically have the street trees there and a grass lawn or some other landscape. Then behind the sidewalk, what we're calling the street front is really the primary onsite landscaping. That's really dressing up the building to focus on the street or sidewalk. Then we've got the parking lot exterior, so providing some sort of screening buffering and also trees around the exterior. In the interior of the lot, of the parking lot, is where the parking lot islands is the primary component of that. And it's where you get the trees to provide some shade and reduce the heat on effect and also kind of just dress up the parking lot. So it's not the sea of asphalt. Then around the tension ponds, miscellaneous open areas around the building foundation and buffer yards. So I'll get into buffer yards now. This is just an example. I like showing you kind of contrasting buffer yards. One on the left is screen, a big box kind of service area. And was obviously built more recently compared to the one on the right, which really is just a metal fence without any landscaping. So obviously the look on the left is more what we're going for on buffer yards. So they're really intended for when you have two incompatible uses adjacent to each other. Industrial next to residential, multifamily next to single family, just having an extra buffer of landscaping in there. Six major changes proposed with the buffer yards. One is using tables similar to the earlier concept of trying to convey information in an easier to understand way. Also expanded the use between incompatible uses to include things like multifamily, which multifamily and single family. Which we don't currently have a buffer requirement for that, but as we're seeing more multifamily development, it's something we wanted to add. Also standardized buffer yard types that have a width and plant density. And that's shown on the next slide and I'll get into that in more detail. And they're, they're assigned based on the degree of incompatibility. So, and that's also an additional slide. Eliminating the buffer yard in the CD district because that's not really part of the character of downtown with big buffer yards. It's more, more dense, more buildings up to the street and buildings up to law lines. And also requiring a mix of plant materials, so you have evergreens, shade trees, ornamentals. So you have seasonal, year-round screening and interest. So the tables would be set up like this. You have five types, the first table at the top of the page, five types of buffer yards. Type one being the least, providing the least amount of screening or buffering. Down to type five being the most intense, so around the heavy industrial type uses, we'd see uses like screening. Screening of the heavier industrial uses. And then there's also a reduced buffer yard option for more constrained sites, for smaller sites where they can't fit a standard buffer yard. They have the option of fencing and walls and things like that in addition to landscaping. And then the next table, it's probably hard to read, but it's kind of a matrix of the zoning proposed for development. So for example, the general commercial here, you're proposing development there. If you are adjacent to a single-family district SF1, that tells you you need a type three buffer yard. And so you come back to this chart and it tells you how many shade trees, ornamental, et cetera.
So the sliding scale that you were talking about, where the buffer yard can get narrower if it's denser or if it's wider. It doesn't have to have as much, you know, that kind of comes from the concept that we adopted in the CAC when all the neighbors that back up to what were proposed, where the car lots were proposed. So I just wanted to point that out, that we did adopt something like this out there as something to help the neighbors when we were going through that whole exercise.
Mike, can you go to the slide before this one? Or the one before with the picture? Because you see that really narrow strip where we're, it looks like there's trees in there, right?
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm not a, an arborist or anything, so I don't know. But those trees are fine in that little small space right now, but when they're like 20 years from now, that, to me, that seems like a, a really too small of a space to tell somebody they have to have a tree there. It's gonna...
Yeah, that's a great.
I mean, so I don't know if that was addressed, is, because I can't tell.
That's a great comment. And I didn't even catch it looking at this one, but, so the general width minimum we'd want for a tree is six feet.
Okay, because what is that there, right there? Probably like... So we, we did make that increase, okay?
I did have a question about the trees and weeds or space like that. Do we have any guidelines on what type of tree goes in there? Because it makes a difference to the roof structure and the canopy and all that.
So we've, we've got pretty extensive appendices, plant lists for what's approved, what's prohibited. We didn't get into, if it's a narrow strip, you should use X. If it's a wider strip, we didn't go into quite that detail. We could look at that.
Does it make a difference?
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a four-foot strip, like it definitely, there's definitely certain smaller species you'd want to use. I mean, it could be as simple as, it needs to be an ornamental type tree.
And I'm thinking about personal experience too. Trees are planted in the wrong place, by creepizomer and concrete, like sidewalks buckle, sidewalks buckle.
Right.
So I was assuming we were addressing that in the type of tree that's put in.
Yeah, so we don't get into the type, we're getting more just a general X number of feet from the sidewalk.
And Paul, so I think they keep it simple because you're, you're right Ken, I mean, there are, there are trees that are really appropriate being next to a street and ones that aren't that do cause that keeping and bucking. So let's just have planning meet with our arborist and have him look at it.
Right, I didn't even know exactly what you are, I'm just making sure that's being addressed.
You're absolutely right. There are ones that work great and ones that don't. And that was a great opportunity, I think, for us to get that list down.
Now this industrial, we're coming in today, instead of that metal fence, you would require plant instead, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and while we're kind of on that topic a little bit, as far as major arterials and entryways into town, do we have requirements now that they use vinyl or some other material that doesn't, instead of cedar or the, like Seventh Street? You know, there's a lot of the old wooden fences on the west side and then on the east side there's, there's, you know, vinyl. Are we requiring now vinyl in certain areas to...
So when you talk about seven, that's mostly residential. We haven't gotten into materials as much on residential. When they're commercial sites, we, I know Scott, if you know it, we at least discourage cedar on commercial type sites. I'm not sure if it's a restriction for the code.
Yeah, we don't encourage cedar to be used in commercial settings because it doesn't hold up over time. But I think to Dr. Jones's point, the, the, the back fences that we see along like 11th Street in those areas, that's something that we're addressing through your street standards with the option to do those loop driveways. And that would allow, similar to what you'll see up in Rainnades, the homes will face the collector and arterial streets as opposed to the backyard fence. And so hopefully that'll be, the development community will use that option so that we won't have those kind of canyons of cedar fences on either side of our arterial streets.
And we've also looked at in the subdivision standards, which will come before you at some point in the near future, when you, when you are plating a new subdivision of requiring more of a landscape buffer that's maintained by HOA or Metro District along Seventh. So you wouldn't have backyards with the fences right there. You can still have your backyard fence, but just be a 15 or 20-foot strip of landscaping that's maintained by HOA or Metro District. So I think that's the buffer yard concept. The water-wise landscaping. So as Windsor's continued to grow and we've, we're all aware of the water issue of, as Colorado Front Range continues to grow, we've looked at expanding the, what we do with kind of zero and low water requirements for landscaping. It's currently encouraged in the landscape standards, but there's really no, there's no teeth to it and there's no requirement. So what we've looked at is really five major components. One is a, let's see. The minimum of 65% of shrubs shall be low or very low water use. And this is the appendices I mentioned earlier, classifying proof plant lists and includes their water usage. It's a method that a lot of the surrounding jurisdictions have used a similar approach. And 65% is a number I looked at based on some recent site plans, what they're, what they're already doing. From my anecdotal research of a few of those, most of them were coming close or already meeting those. So I think landscape consultants and property owners are aware of the benefit of flow water. So in most cases, it wouldn't be a huge shift from that. The next component would be a maximum 15% of high-water shrub through trees. A medium, medium or high-water grass turf are limited to high-use or high-visibility areas. And that's straight out of our current standards. And it's never really come up to be an issue of what's high-use, what's high-visibility. Again, developers tend to want to limit those areas except in the real prominent locations. And also, we're adding on to that to say there's no restriction on when you're doing low-water turf, low-water grasses. When they're irrigated, you can do those throughout the site. I do want to point out, we see some native seed mixes more on the, a lot of times on the industrial sites that don't, they don't look great honestly after a few years if they haven't been maintained well. So having some irrigation, even if it's really just to give, even the grass is established for the first couple of years is important. Next component is hydrozones, which is grouping of plants by their water usage. So if you have, if you do have higher water use plants, you put them all together so you're not overwatering the low, low-water use plants. And finally, rain shut-off sensors, which a lot of people are doing anyway, but it's, but it's the common sense. So you're not watering when it's raining or when it's recently rained. So that's the water-wise component. And then just a few other kind of smaller items. We've, we've just looked at clarifying and simplifying things. And we clarified maintenance responsibility for ongoing maintenance of landscaping. Another issue is industrial site, the larger industrial sites, like in, in the Great Western Industrial Park. A lot of those users will come in, will have a lot of ground that they're not really using or developing, whether it's for future expansion or some other, it's just unneeded ground for them. So the, the 15% landscape requirement we currently have translates into a lot of, a lot of planting. So we've, we've looked at more a sliding scale for those large industrial sites where it's, if you're a three to 10-acre site, you need to have 8% landscaping. If your 10 acres or over, it's 5%. So you'd still be required to provide all the different landscape components along the street scape and parking lot. But you wouldn't have to do acres of landscaping just to meet the, this requirement. So that's, those are the kind of big changes we're looking at. If there's questions, happy to get into those. Sidney?
So with the water-wise requirements, I know zero scaping is becoming really popular, trying to reduce that water footprint. Is there anything in there, because I didn't see it, but maybe I'm missing it, to create some sort of standards tied to the zero scaping? There's the provisions in there about different types of plants, different kinds of trees, so that you don't just have a, you know, row of X. But with the zero scaping, it seems like aesthetically, you know, a huge area of just nothing but regular river rock looks pretty yuck. But if you've got, you know, some nice variation of materials and tiers and things like that, does this have anything tied to zero scaping?
Yeah, so we had the, we had the same concern about we don't want this river rock everywhere. So we did put a maximum percentage, I believe, on what you can, area that can be just rock. I want to say 15%, I'd have to double check what we put in. But currently you'll see people develop their kind of planting beds that'll use river rock. And then we require mulch just at the base. We wouldn't count that towards your maximum rock percentage. But if you wanted, just do different areas, we do have a percentage in there to limit that.
I just wonder if maybe there's some room to have a higher limit allowed if there's, you know, certain standards met where there's different material tiers, maybe, you know, big boulders that, you know, create some of that same aesthetic breakup that a tree does, but obviously doesn't need water and maintenance, things like that.
Yeah, we can definitely look more at that.
And then is there something for rain sensors on existing? I mean, is there, are they, do they get grandfathered in or is there something that kind of makes them get up to date so that they aren't watering while it's pouring rain?
Sure. No, we would, we would just apply to projects moving forward, so. But typically that's how it would be done. We could look at retroactive if that's a direction we'd want to go.
Yeah, generally, we, these would just apply to new site plans or amendments to existing site plans. So if somebody, if it did change hands and they wanted to make some changes, we could implement them at that time. But typically, we haven't gone back on existing site plans. So that'd be something we'd be directing from the boards as far as retroactively going back on previously approved site plans.
Well, what's involved with that? I mean, from a, from a business perspective, is that a, is that a minor thing or is that a major?
I guess it probably depends on the site and I don't, I don't know what the cost of getting a landscape designer, you know, I don't, we'd have to look into what that would entail and let them know.
Are you referring to rain sensors?
Yeah, like, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a minor thing, I, I wouldn't mind looking at making it retroactive. But if it's a, if it's a significant cost, big deal for a business?
It's not a significant cost typically, like the water, those rain sensors, 40 to 60 bucks. Even I think, you know, the conservation program could probably provide this for you. Because that is a way of acquiring water resources. That would be something we can look at. They're very easy to install.
Oh.
They're just basically a little container that has wafer disc in it and you hit that. It expands, shuts off the system, and then when they dry out, they shrink, the system turns back on. Pretty simple.
If that's the case, I think, I think we should probably look at that. And I like your idea of maybe being able to get a grant or whatever of some kind that could help with those folks implementing.
They would want to do it, probably just save money.
Yeah.
Yeah, 40 or 60 dollars, that's just one bad water bill.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't make anything else retroactive, those, that.
Well, maybe we could make it just more of a water conservation campaign and just encourage people to do it.
Yeah, a conservation, water conservation.
If we're able to provide those, I, I think, again, I mean, just like my water bill for August at my home, I was like, wow. I mean, I could have used something like this. Nobody had me ready to turn it off, so I guess not.
Well, isn't there, there's one time in the year when we, we used to have our focus on water conservation. We had water kits, maybe, I don't know, when, at the spring sometime, I want to say. Maybe when we come to that again, we add that to that week when we're focused on our water conservation efforts for, you know, our business folks.
You said 40 dollars, is that for a particular residence or a business or...
So each clock would just need one.
Each clock?
Yeah.
Maybe we could buy a hundred and do a first come, first served or something.
Like Shane said, that's cut your water bill every time.
Some of the over controllers don't have a place for it. Let you, let you put it in line and shut the whole thing off.
I like your idea of making a public awareness campaign first and see how to deal with that. And then you, maybe perhaps if that doesn't produce a significant, that's good, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can work on that, unlike the mayor was saying, kind of that water, water week, I think we could pass something.
Or give them three years to convert or something.
Right.
Well, something to keep in mind is these standards only apply to commercial and industrial and multifamily. So, you know, if there's a, I guess a concurrent program for single-family detached homes, that might be something that's the water-wise weak. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that the landscape standards don't apply to residential.
That's probably what the big savings would be, houses versus the future.
I had a question about that, on landscape standards. Why would we not want to give developers some guidelines for residential landscaping?
For, for the homeowners that landscaped the lots when, after the house is built?
Well, it'd be tough to do that for individuals, but for developers who are putting in a development. Okay.
You mean in common, you mean in common areas?
Or metro districts that require 13 plants in your front yard. Yeah, I've got some concerns about, again, I'll just use my, our metro district requires 13 plants in your front yard. Okay, it doesn't say with type, but you have 13 plants, so you could buy a little pot, you know, whatever. But why would we not give some guidelines to metro districts or new housing developments? About especially where trees are located close to the streets and those kind of things.
Would any of these standards apply to the common spaces of a single-family development? That, that are owned by either the HOA or metro district?
Currently, they wouldn't. But that's not to say that we couldn't adopt something along those lines. We'd have to think about the implementation and enforcement. I mean, obviously, when we're out inspecting the streets and the public improvements, we could set planning out or, or the forestry department out to inspect the common areas as well. But the part about what's required or allowed in an individual, single-family detached lot, that's something that, well, I think, you know, it could be some, something the town board considers when they're approving a metro district. But I don't know that it would be addressed in these landscape standards.
Yeah, we, we don't really currently, the one concept I've seen, I think Carla May mentioned Greeley does this, is for a single-family home, you're, to avoid someone just completely putting rock down or a huge driveway pavement, you do require 50% of the front yard just to be planting material. It could be grass, it could be whatever. So we've seen that done and I don't think that's unreasonable.
But who approves the metro districts or HOAs? Books, when they come through as far as landscape standards and that type of thing? I mean, I know that there's a standard when it comes to how much of the exterior facade of a house, it's got to be stone or, you know, stucco or something like that, but what about like the landscaping portion of it?
Yeah, the town doesn't have any standards for single-family home architecture or landscaping. So that's really been left to the development community when they're setting up their HOA and their private covenants. But again, with the approval of a metro district service plan, I think the town board could probably come up with some conditions if they had a concern that the metro district is requiring too much plant material.
Or should we be more proactive though and just like put it in our landscaping plan now, just some guidelines so we could actually measure against that? Because if not, it would just look subjective, you know, like, oh, we've got 13... Because if not, it would just look subjective, you know, like, oh, well, you've got thirteen plants, we really think you need no more than ten.
Yeah, that's ridiculous, you know.
Yeah.
I'm trying to take the pros and cons, I mean, we haven't done anything because it's individual property right over. I can do what I want, my property, that's one philosophy. Also, the metro districts generally have potable water, so we haven't really worried about it. I'm just raising the question, trying to take the pros and cons.
But it's that, I don't think it's really as much of a private property right deal, because like you said, your HOA, my HOA, everybody probably says, you, you should have so many plants.
Right.
It's private property, there's already being dictated what we're gonna put in or not.
That's true.
So maybe there should be some town guidelines saying, these are the kind of things we wanna see. Because again, it's, I don't think, unless you don't live in a metro district, which is very few and far between, you're probably dictated on what that's gonna be.
That's true.
My only thing would be to caution putting them in the landscape standards to the, where there's an expectation that staff is inspecting, all enforcing whatever the metro district.
Well, I, I think maybe we just refer them back to that, that agreement with them? Where, where we just have kind of the trigger where, where we have something to check. Again, yeah, I don't want us to have to go out and count, oh, there's three potheads, you're in violation today. Yeah, I think that maybe we wanna at least give some kind of guidance and code where we have another box to check off when we're, when we're reviewing them.
And one, you, it's not retroactive for sure.
I wonder if it could be a, a.
No, go ahead.
I wonder if it could just be like a model landscape standard for metro districts, and if they vary from it quite a bit, then it stands out to us.
Right, yeah, I think it's like some guidelines, I mean, you don't wanna have, I mean, you know, obviously, like, rain dance is going on now. They have their own brand and what they're trying to do, I don't think we wanna overly dictate what that looks like. But I think that the town should have some kind of guidelines where if you're kind of outside of this, whether it's just nothing but rock out front, to acres and acres of Kentucky bluegrass, you know, we probably need something in the middle to say, this is, you know, you're gonna be somewhere near for, for water wise, and encourage things like.
Well, going off of what Ken said, I mean, in our neighborhood, for instance, it requires, when you do your backyard, you have to have at least one tree. The tree at four feet off the ground has to be four inches in diameter. I mean, there's this, I guess I always figured that our HOA's landscaping documents were, I, I guess I never asked, who developed that standard, that in the front yard, there's gotta be one tree, it's gotta be, you know, because then technically, you could have a metro district come in and go, you don't need any vegetation at all. And if we have no standard as far as the town, how do we prevent there absolutely being nothing, I don't.
But if we create a standard, how are we gonna enforce it?
Well, I, I think it's gonna be just, again, when we do, when the metro district brings in their legal documents, and they're saying, hey, we're gonna create a metro district, and these are gonna be the standards. I think that's the point where we kinda set that, Your Honor, is just in the agreement, just saying, you know, kinda giving them guidance in that, for the landscaping standard. After that, you're right, once it goes out the door, I don't, unless we.
I mean, I don't know how we're gonna dictate individual homeowners, I mean, I, I guess the HOAs can and do in their HOAs, but if, if you, if you're not part of that, I think, I think you'd have some homeowners who would have some heartburn saying, why are you dictating to me?
The police scene is up to the metro district or the HOA. We're just saying that this is the minimum standard for a neighborhood. I just worry about a neighborhood coming in and going, we wanna be the greenest, no water, you know, everything neighborhood. And so, you know, we want it to have, look like an Arizona front yard where it's all rock and, you know, and what can we say? Because it would completely look out of place in Windsor, I don't.
And I wasn't suggesting that we go to the individual home level at all, because that would be a nightmare, inappropriate, or.
But I think, but I think it would be.
I do think we could ask guidelines for metro districts and HOAs for some.
Well, and I think it would be appropriate during, again, this water conservation week, and maybe we already have it, where we, I mean, maybe some folks would even like to have this information, where we just make it more available, like, if, you know, or have it for folks when they're coming and pulling, you know, a permit, or give it to developers to give to homeowners, so they have some guidance, that, you know, because I see a lot of folks, because I walk all over this town, who've made some pretty probably drastic landscaping mistakes, but they didn't intend to do that. They didn't realize this tree or this bush was gonna grow the way it did, and now they're stuck with it, and it's overhanging on the sidewalk or something, so. You know, and I don't know if we already have something like that available, but maybe we take some of those and just kinda put them in something practical to just, so folks have that information.
And some guidelines for HOAs and metro districts.
Yeah.
Well, you had mentioned something before about people who put like stone in driveway. You say you have a regulation to stop that now, or not?
Currently, no, I don't think we do.
Okay.
We, it was, I think it's proposed that it would be fifty percent plant material in the front yard.
That'd be a good idea.
At some point, we, we may have to or want to look like Arizona, though.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised in five or ten years, we might be.
With the water situation.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to be pro or con with that, I was just trying to say, we don't have a standard in place, how can we?
I could see a neighborhood trying to do that, make it really cool looking, so I'd be afraid to go too far, force too much.
I think where I live, some of the complaints are the other way around, where the HOAs require too much vegetation, where you can't do much zero escaping, it's simply burnt it out. So there, I think there's both sides of the fence there.
We've historically stayed away from HOA covenants, regulating their covenants, what, what they wanna do as a private matter, covenants on real property, we've not stepped into. Now, when it comes to metro districts, it's only of relatively recent origin that metro districts have taken on covenant enforcement. So we had, when we did our code rewrite on metro districts three years ago now, that was a topic, because the statutes only had recently been amended to allow metro districts to do covenant enforcement like HOAs used to do. So it's, you know, there aren't a whole lot of metro districts in Windsor that manage the covenants. They generally are there to finance public improvements, run a swimming pool. So that's, that's another challenge to getting to these things through metro districts, because there aren't a lot of them. But Rain Dance, their, their metro district is empowered to do limited covenant enforcement.
Same thing at, at Ridge Army, right?
Yeah.
Well, if it's not a metro district and it's a, in a metro district area, where's the governance lie on landscape standards? Is it still a metro district thing, they just choose whether or not to enforce it, or?
Usually, the, the covenants happen before the districts come up with that stuff, so the, the districts sort of defer to an HOA. A developer, developer side created thing, and the districts are just there to finance public improvements and landscaping enhancements and that kind of stuff. Yeah, it's, it's pretty rare around here, anyway, for metro districts to deal with covenant enforcement. That's usually left to an HOA.
I think there's an opportunity there for, I guess I call it leadership versus, you know, heavy hammer, but opportunity for us to at least suggest and guide loads, even limiting some landscaping and water conservation at the front end of metro district service plans. Water wise week, some information individuals, I think that's a great idea. Try to encourage people, here are some conservation ideas that enhance your property without too much landscaping or too much rock, you know.
I agree with that, but I don't think we wanna go so far as to where enforcement might shift us. I mean, it'd be nice to avoid that altogether.
Right, right.
And like Ken said, call it guideline.
Right.
Realistic enforcement, because it's a.
And I think Miles' point, too, I think people are very conscious about water, our community. So I think to the degree that we can offer positive proactive leadership and suggestions, will have some effect, anyway.
I think there are people that want to, but they don't know how to, and that'd be perfect.
And people don't think before you can.
I think we get a lot of transplants that wanna do their yard like they did in some other state, and then realize after the fact that we.
All those people from Iowa, the people from Iowa?
Yeah, those people.
Easy, easy. My palm tree looks horrible, right?
You have one of those steel palm trees, he's got one of those steel palm trees with lights up at the top.
Okay, what's the next piece?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Can I ask for a clarification on something? The landscaping on large industrial sites, I, I, I have to admit, I don't know that I like just having these blanket, there's just other changes in these other three areas, without us actually knowing what's going on. Because the last thing I want is we have a developer who's trying to put something in an industrial site, and they're going, how is it that I've gotta do this much landscaping in an industrial area or something?
Well, to Paul's point, I'm sorry, to Paul's point, it's actually addressing issues that we've had come up in some of the industrial parks, and it's, I think, the feedback that we'll get from those developers will be positive. And most of the text of this document is already the, the town's existing tree and landscape standards. It's just being reorganized, and he's, Paul just hit the highlights tonight as far as what's changing. But you'll definitely get the entire document.
Is there some way that when we get the document, we can have a red line, or something where we know what's being added or changed, or reworded, or something like that? I just don't wanna have a issue where we've had, where we passed something and then had.
Sure. Yeah, the existing document is a completely different format, but we can try and put together a.
Well, and it may not be, need, need to be completely reproduced, but there's some way to note what's changing in urban or whatever, that's all.
Yep.
Well, the real heavy stuff, Scott, is really just where you have different districts, correct? I mean, if you're just, within the industrial park, you have a lot lighter requirement than you do if you back up to a residential site.
Right, right.
It's not as onerous for most of the facilities, the guys on the perimeter are gonna have to be doing a lot more.
The, the full body of the proposed, proposed code is an attachment in there. So if you have, if you want to see exactly how it's worded and those things, it's in there.
But I think his point, though, is if we, if we could pull that out and, and tell the board, this is a new requirement, this is higher than it used to be, this is removing it, just so they know. Again, when you look through code, sometimes it's hard, and I think to people who don't work in this every day, to really read a sentence and say, oh, wow, that means we have to put in fifty more trees than we had to put in yesterday. So I think that's his point, is just if we can just crawl those out and make sure they see.
Kind of trigger the expectation of what we'll be able to provide to that, because the current standards, there's a lot of, I'd say, a lot of administrative judgment on, in many cases, it requires too much, that it's, it's impossible, and you have overlapping areas. We can do a comparison, but I'm not sure how, how easy it'll be in order to show.
Yeah, Paul really hit the highlights of what we really are trying to go the other direction. I prefer to like Falcon Point and some of those types of industrial parks where they've really had a hard time meeting the current landscape standards, because they've got big outdoor storage areas out back and things like that. Technically speaking, they're supposed to have fifteen percent of that landscaped. So taking out that type of, I guess, onerous requirement is a big part of the industrial changes.
Well, I think it's the goal of the board to be fair and equitable across the board, you know, that it's, and I think really what the board is concerned about is the minimum standards. The, this is what the minimum is, so that if we have a developer or, you know, owner of a property that's wanting to have an issue with that, or, you know, wants to, to seek us out about, how did this get passed? That we were aware of what is in place, that's all that I'm. It's probably the minimum standards that I'm really referring to, so that we, that we know what's, what, what it currently says and what would be proposed.
Okay, so there's some way you can figure out how to show some variances as to what you're proposing. Okay, we have a second item, a code update for tree maintenance code, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I wanted to kind of piggyback with the discussion that Planning just had in terms of municipal code seven point four point five zero. As you know, also, we've been having a lot of concerns brought to the attention of the forestry department in terms of landscaping that is hanging over or budding into the right of way. And so we've been dealing with that a lot more frequently this year than we have in previous years. So I wanted to bring your attention, if you weren't aware, the, the way that code currently reads. So it says, it shall be the duty of the town to trim, prune, remove, or destroy any trees, shrubs, or hedges in, over, or upon the public right of any street, alley, sidewalk, or other public place within the town. You could probably go for a walk or a drive, especially in what we'll call Old Town Windsor, and find hundreds of examples that violate this ordinance, meaning all of that burden, that work, is on our department to enforce and take care of. So I shared with you in the packet, and I'll just go through them very quickly. These are examples of plantings, I think to your point that you made earlier, where someone might have planted a tree, and that thing is now grown to maturity, and it's now encroaching on a sidewalk or a road, in, into the right of way, it becomes, and these are great examples of really the burden of the town to manage. For example, that sidewalk is supposed to be accessible, it no longer is. You have site triangles that you can't see around the corners for cars that are coming, another example of sidewalks. You know, someone planted grass that was beautiful and small, and now it's full grown. Some more. And again, you could go find hundreds of these if you walked out there today. The concern for staff is, I think the intent of this originally, and again, I'm giving my interpretation, was when those plants or foliage or trees were planted, they were, they're planted in private property, but then they've grown, and once, the way this ordinance reads, it's now the town's burden to handle and manage, i.e. go cut it down, go trim it, take on the, the work and the expense. And so what we'd like for you to consider, at least talk about tonight, is a draft ordinance that we created, and see if there, if we can change the ordinance in some way, if the board is so inclined, to put the onus back on to the homeowner, if that, that tree or shrub or grass is planted or rooted in public property, even though it may grow into the right of way in the future, that it is really, we can identify these, and then send letters to the homeowner, contact them and say, hey, you know, Mr. or Mrs. homeowner, this is actually your property, and you need to manage it. And then if they choose not to, we have some enforcement capability from there. So I did some quick anecdotal research, looking at code for the surrounding communities, and basically, they all do what I just spoke to, which is they put the burden on the homeowner if it is a, a, a foliage that is in public, or in private property, rooted, i.e. if you plant a tree in your yard, and twenty years from now, it now grows over the road, it's still your tree, it's your responsibility. All the other communities do, and it's not in the draft, but it's something that we did wanna bring up. They require a certified arborist or lands, or licensed landscaper to take care of it. If the homeowner, the homeowner can still do it themselves, but if they choose to hire someone, they have to be certified. So they can't just hire some fly-by-night company that comes in and says, well, sure, I can cut your tree down. And when they're doing it, the tree falls down and crushes, you know, four cars in the street, because they don't know how to professionally remove a tree. So it's something that we'd like for you to also consider. So basically, what you see is putting the onus, and I won't read these to you, but basically, the onus is now on the homeowner, if you were to accept the draft ordinance, saying, so staff would identify something that's like an example in the pictures, and we would send a letter to the homeowner and say, you have thirty, sixty, however many days we wanted for you to remedy the situation, whether that's you do it yourself, or you hire a professional. If you wanted to go the licensed route, that'd be great. If you, if they, they fail to do that, then we would do that, i.e., we would either contract it or do it in-house, and then bill the homeowner by, you know, putting a lien on their home, sending a bill, that kind of stuff. So again, it's, it's their, our interpretation of it's really their property, and so it should be theirs to take care of and manage. If it's a safety issue, something we need to immediately take care of, we, we can still do that. But a lot of these, you can see, if we would have identified them and notified the homeowner, we would have hoped that, you know, the bushes that are encroaching on the sidewalk, they could have trimmed them back, and, you know, those kind of things could be handled. So I wanted to open up and just have a conversation with you, if there are any concerns, your thoughts, and ultimately, if you're inclined for us to change the ordinance in any way, we can go back and I'll work with you and to, to draft up whatever you might feel would be appropriate.
Well, I met with our, my new board, the liaison board, the tree board is very active and passionate, no offense, planning, but. I love the tree board. So there, this was discussed there, and the big concern is that someone like me will go out there and just hack away at the tree, and tell it, you know, and get it out of the right of way, and they're worried about the life of the tree, the aesthetics of the tree. They're very passionate about their trees. How do we address that? I mean, we could say hire a professional. How do we address that? I mean, we could say hire a professional.
You could, but ultimately it is your property as a homeowner. So believe me, you have the right to remedy it, to do it. It's, it's your tree, it's your bush, it's your shrub. Um, if you don't feel capable, again, homeowner's decision. You can then choose to hire a professional, but if you wanted to go in those examples, trim the hedges back, you can do that. Uh, in, in what I'm proposing and what staff would recommend.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, their concern is you're gonna damage the tree and kill the tree potential, all those.
My concern is, is what's legally enforceable, like via a lien or add it to their water bill or, you know, I don't know. I, I'm, what, 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 what enforcement mechanism do we have as far as they haven't done it within the reasonable amount of time, whatever's determined to be? We go do it, assess our bill to it.
We can assess it on the property taxes.
Oh, is that where, okay.
Same as weed ordinance. When we order, you know, people to chop the weeds when they get over eighteen inches or whatever and they don't, we do it. Send them a bill if not, it, it goes on some kind of lien, but I, I see this as fitting the same situation.
I think the difference is removing a tree could be much more costly than, you know, hacking some weeds down, so.
I mean, you're talking some, in some cases, thousands of dollars.
So would there be potential for a scholarship opportunity? I don't know how like.
And that was something that the tree board had suggested, you know, if you have, uh, someone who doesn't have the financial means to. Pay for a five thousand dollar tree that needs to come down, is that something that we, uh, create some kind of scholarship? Or is there some kind of help that the town would do to, you know, pay a percentage of it, that kind of thing? I think that, again, that's a board question in terms of, do you want to, uh, set up some kind, something like that or?
And, and I wonder too if we could, um, maybe contact some local arborists, talk to them about the program and say, look. You know, you have the right credentials, you do this work, um, we're gonna push this out into town. And see if we can maybe negotiate a rate for everybody. So maybe we have five different arborists, we're not necessarily recommending any one of them specifically. But, um, if, if you know that we're gonna push this out and they have a chance to be listed on the list, maybe they'll give people a bigger discount.
What do we spend, where do we spend a year remedying these?
I will find that out and get that back to you. I will tell you that we are dealing with it on a as brought to us basis. If we were actively out there going up and down the streets checking even once a month, I think it would be exponentially higher. We're, we're literally dealing with a Yorgov request or a, one of, uh, board members or citizen calls and says there's a sightline issue.
Eric, and we actually, that's, that's how we historically have handled it. I'll tell you right now, we have the PD and the CSO's out trying to be a little bit more proactive. Just because we have so many complaints, I think, my God, let's just see. Clearly, we've got an overgrowth issue. So Chief Klimak has been having the CSOs get out and be a little bit more proactive right now. Um, but I think where we're gonna hit our bottleneck is we have one arborist and most of the time it's like, okay, this is a problem, what can we do? You know, can you take and can you raise up the canopy? Will that kill the tree? Do we know what it'll look like? So I think Ken is gonna probably, we're gonna probably get our capacity with him pretty quickly.
So, so if we do a lien on someone's property, what's the process for them paying? I mean, if it's thousands of dollars, can they make payments over a year? Or how, how, how do we do that? Or how could we do that?
They can pay what they can, just like any other, you know, like whatever they can pay. Usually where we collect our liens is when the property turns over or somebody goes in and refinances. And the lender says, this lien needs to be satisfied before they'll step into title. So the lien becomes something, we, we sometimes do stuff under our, for example, our nuisance ordinance that's referred to up here.
Yeah.
That stuff doesn't get paid until years later.
I was gonna say, it could be years.
And there's an interest rate that goes with it and the title companies pick it up and they call and say, what's your pay on? And we say, well, we did it for a thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-seven. It's now with interest, it's twenty-seven hundred.
So what it tells me is if we went out and said, you're gonna cut your tree, they don't do it, we go cut it to two thousand dollars, we end up paying that down.
Yeah, and under the current language of the code, it's our duty to do it.
Right, which, that's gotta change.
We should be doing that.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I would say I think with the existing language, and it's hard to know to go back in time. But, but it reads to me like something to say, referring to all the street trees, you know, things the town owns, uh, in parks. I mean, really it looks like language saying, look, we get the we own trees as a town and we're gonna maintain them. I, I would be surprised if the draft of that ordinance thought and we wanna take care of all these single family home trees as well. I mean, that is such a burden and, and thirty years ago, it would have been a huge burden for the town. So I, I, I don't think that this is something that, that, that ever the legislative intent was, let's take care of private property trees as well. It's just pretty, um, ill, ill-suited language.
I, I, I agree with this. And then, uh, one thing that worries me is our exposure, like I wasn't aware of this until after I joined the board. And I could go home tonight and I could take a walk and I could log twenty Yorgos and the town would be on the hook to go take care of all that private property.
I, I am opposed to this, but I think if we could afford it, we should give people ample time.
Yes.
Yeah, like really ample time that, to correct these measures.
Yeah, for a, for a gigantic tree limb versus a trim your hedge back. You know, maybe the, the, it, there should be some rule of reason here. I, I agree with that too. And that's, that's easy enough to build into policy, as long as we give people notice.
Well, and, uh, as long, I, I don't know how much we've enforced this, but my, my thing is the people may not even know that they're in violation. Or that they, I, I'm giving people the benefit of the doubt, is all I'm saying is.
Currently, currently they're not even, they're not in violation.
Right, 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 right.
We're, we're sending a letter saying your tree is dead, please cut it down. You know, I mean, it's just like, Jesus, be creative. If it didn't fall down and kill somebody, please admit that's it. Um, so, you know, right now we have no teeth at, at all. So, um, and I don't think that there's gonna be. You know, but when we look through town, there's not tons of dead trees. And I think the extreme of saying cut down a three thousand dollar tree. Uh, could be a burden for people, but I don't think we're gonna hit twenty-five hundred homes with that letter. I think more of it is gonna be like, look, your shrub's growing out of the sidewalk and it's just little, you know. At, at thirty minutes on a Saturday to trim back kind of deal.
Something Joy is probably already doing this. Like already Joy recently sent out letters to every person who had trees blocking the sidewalk. And they ate away, if you didn't have it remedied in seven days, it was gonna start fineing you twenty-five dollars a day.
Yeah. I have another question about payment. Um, I'm a little, I, I, I think the policy is great. We need to go in that direction. I can see us nodding up, uh, quite a bill with no revenue to pay for it. Is there a way that maybe it could be. Instead of waiting till the property changes or refinanced, uh, could it be broken up into payments under water bill? Or is there some other way to?
The language, the language in the nuisance ordinance and that would be built into this gives us all kinds of different remedies. The lien is not the only source of recovery. If they're not exclusive, they're cumulative. So we could, we could sue somebody. We could work out a payment plan with them short of suing somebody. So, you know, but, but, you know, for the most part with, despite, with snow and ice and weed nuisances. We have, we notify them, we lien the property and, and then, you know, a lot of the time when the title companies call in and we tell them it was a thousand, now it's twenty-seven hundred.
Yeah.
We'll discount it if they'll pay it within so many months. And that goes for utility liens. I mean, our lien settlement policies are pretty generous so that we get to the thousand we laid out.
Right.
And we don't.
Which is a concern with the cash flow.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree.
Don't we have a file somewhere where we know how many liens we have that we're currently waiting on? And what those add up to in terms of dollars? And have all those folks been provided, uh, other opportunities to pay rather than just a lien or?
I think it's, I think we can certainly from the police department, have, we have a collection of those kinds of liens. Uh, I can tell you, we probably have not reached out to these folks and said, how's about a payment plan? When it comes to utility liens, the utility department can tell you who's, who needs to pay. But, um, and again, we don't leave them out and say, how about a payment plan?
And, and normally these are really code enforcement is most common you're doing it, like, you know, your weeds are too tall, they're non-responsive. We have to show up, cut them down, send them the bill. Um, so that's probably if the town has done it at all, it's been in those.
We're going the other way with this than we did on the sidewalks. It used to be.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Well, when Dennis first arrived way back when, the homeowner, the homeowner paid all their, or the gutter replaced. And then it switched to fifty-fifty.
Wow.
And now the town picks up the whole tab. But back in the days when the homeowner used to pay, there were all kinds of. Payment arrangements worked out and I can't recall exactly what they were, but so much a year or whatever to pay it off. So the homeowner's gotten quite a break in sidewalks.
Most people require that homeowner to pay that right now.
Well, I don't know if it's a legitimate concern, maybe it is. We go and just say, hey, the town's gonna trim your tree that's hanging over into the street. A, and then their tree dies and they claim that it was the town's fault that you went in there and hacked this or, you know, cut off. Disturbed the root system. I don't know, all of the different, you know, terms. And now we're in a liability situation. We're trying to solve a problem. Maybe we're indemnified, I don't know. I'm just trying to play devil's advocate on it turning in potentially into a bigger mountain than a mobile, so.
Liability I'm not worried about, but you know, you, you'll get a lot of static from certain people who say you killed my tree. Even if, even if it's not a liability issue, I suppose you might have that.
Well, I think something like that, that file, I mean, we're, we're gonna have it documented. It's gonna be the letter, hey, look, it's on the over. We give them all the notice. We probably got pictures of it documented. And we have Ken, who's a certified arborist, saying, that's crazy talk. Cut this, can't do it. So I, I think he's right. Some people could threaten that, but I'm, I'm not concerned. I, I think that when we show our files saying, this is what we have, judge will say, okay, you know.
Just ten.
What's that?
Oh, just ten.
Those are current ordinance or the proposed ordinance, uh, address infected trees?
It does not, not specifically, not specifically.
Tell some, some other cities to have that in there, especially with the ash boards.
Right, that's not a bad point, really, to look at it.
Two easy questions, I think. Uh, you said it's a safety issue, it's on us. I made the assumption that's traffic. A, a corner that is, uh, visibility is a different, difficult thing. So we're gonna take care of that right away.
Or a tree falls in the road, it was really a private property tree.
We just take care of that right away.
We're gonna remove the tree from the road.
How, if, if we require a homeowner to use a certified tree cutter, whatever, how do we know that they use a certified?
They have to have passed a, an exam. We don't have that, but those other.
How would we know that?
They would be. I think we would just request that they, they do it and then we can ask, we could ask for them to prove it.
Okay.
Because the people are all on the list, so they all have to take an exam. And Loveland, Greeley, and Four Collins all issued those exams, so we can check with the.
Or is it so that they're insured and bonded against?
It's both.
Bonded, yeah.
Yeah, we had, um, there was a guy when I was in Grand Lake, he did that, and he didn't get the permit. He just went and cut down his neighbor's tree and dropped it right on the car, you know? And he said, of course I would get the permit, you know, too much paperwork for you governments. And I'm like, sure, you had a tr, you had a car. You didn't have it flagged out and you didn't have any insurance. I mean, it was, it was a mess. It wasn't a person. Yeah.
Well, I'm really in favor of this. I, I think we really need to think through some of the procedural things. So we don't end up with a million dollar, it leans that we gotta wait ten years to collect or whatever, you know? The mechanics of it, I think that'd be a challenge.
And we, we could, you know, I, I tell you, cause we did, um, something similar in the last jurisdiction where I worked. It was for, uh, abandoned buildings. And so we put money in to say, look, let's just as a local government, we'll just tear them down. If they won't do it, you know, cause we had a, a concern with that, but we just budget a good number every year. You know, so there are a budget of fifty thousand dollars, shaving that gets us two or three houses. So I think we can do the same thing. I think we could just pick a budget number so we know in any given year, our, our total liability for this program would only be X. And then if we think we've got a bigger issue, we come back to the board and say, look, you said we could put in ten thousand dollars, we've spent it. We think we need more, but at least we could manage that liability that way.
And that would give you, if you wanted to do a scholarship for somebody and put them a criteria, can't afford it, we could help.
Well, I think that would be, I, I would almost think that would be out of the, the board's, uh, community donation fund or something. Maybe if the board wanted to, to take a portion of that, uh, one and a half percent and say, we want this to go towards the scholarship program. That can be a great use of that money.
Yeah, I think we ought to change it ASAP really. I mean, I had a neighbor come over the other day and pointed out a tree. Said that tree needs to be trimmed, is it in the right of way? And I said, yeah, it looks like it. Well, better call the town. So when, when wind gets out that this might be, might be changed, I think.
Get a lot of requests.
We're gonna get a lot of requests.
Yeah, so nobody pick up their phone and tell this thing, get some doctors.
I'm gonna be the first one calling.
I'll get one next door.
I have a tree ish, a tree question, and, and it was brought up at the tree board, so this is, uh, good timing, about the Emerald Ash Board. They're very concerned. They know it's coming. We're gonna get hit like every town, city. Their concern is we don't have a process or money in place to mitigate this and start cutting down trees as it hits. Now, I know we have capital improvement money, if it need be, or do we start accumulating money in our budget cycle? Or do we just know it's coming and we have capital money to do this? I wonder the best solution.
Previous, previous direction that staff has been given by prior managers has been to do nothing. In terms of budgeting X number of dollars, uh, in anticipation of, uh, the Emerald Dashboard coming here. We are monitoring it. Uh, it's not close enough yet for us to begin really overly worrying about it. Um, but it is on my list. I have a meeting tomorrow with finance and Shane. It's on my list to discuss in terms of, do we want to begin to set money aside for that? Or do we want to continue the strategy that we've had, which is wait and see, knowing that we have town owned about. Of our five thousand trees in our inventory, about four or five hundred of them are ash trees. Uh, that we would be, um, responsible for. There are many more and I don't have a count of what's in public, or in the private property.
Who would be responsible for the trees on private property?
On private property, it would be the homeowner, with the exception if this ordinance didn't change. And that tree was in, on, over, or above the right of way, you could interpret it as it's now ours. So that's, it's a discussion, uh, uh, part of the reason why I would argue this needs to change quickly. But then on the Ash, Emerald Ash Board, uh, we, we were gonna discuss that in, in our budget.
Actually, we have a five-year capital plan. Maybe it's year three, twenty twenty-one, we've got fifty thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever that could be.
Well, I've, I've heard that's headed this way for the last seven or eight years.
Right, yeah.
They said it's in Boulder, you know, it's coming this way. I don't know how close it's gotten.
You can, you, you've talked to a variety of people that would say it's going to come this direction. And others would say it's just gonna kind of continue to migrate west.
You know, normally those go with prevailing winds, right? Cause the, the, the board can only fly so far.
Right, or it's transported in, when, when someone cuts down the wood and it's in the wood. And then, and for example, that's why other states don't want firewood brought to that state from another state. Because you then transfer the bug that way.
You don't have to remove the tree, you can treat the tree, but it gets expensive.
Treating, yeah, treating trees are very expensive. Did that in Missouri with one tree and it cost us about four thousand dollars for a tree.
So, uh, you could treat a tree for a hundred dollars a year in your yard, you know, something like that. But so if you have a tree in your yard, yeah, you, you don't have to cut it down. But most municipalities that I'm aware of, like Boulder, I think, uh, was it eight hundred thousand dollars? I think they'd budget, I don't know if that was gonna take care of all of them or if that was for one year. So, I mean, obviously we're not as big as Boulder, but, um, it could be a substantial amount of money to remove them.
Yeah, and, and, and the cost to treat them is based on the size of the tree.
Yeah, the diameter, yeah. You're gonna jerk them or spray them.
Just some, as long as you're.
Yeah, we're, we're aware.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and thanks for that question, Sal. Now I know where he's gonna hit me, so I can.
We can think about it overnight.
Coming to be prepared.
Look out for you.
I don't see Rick here. Is he outside maybe? Bring him in.
So, does it talk about fire blight, whatever?
No.
That's, it's all over, it's in main park, it's all over my neighborhood.
So we welcome Rick Western and you guys are, are, are up. If you are up, if you are ready then.
Trying to use everything.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll give you a quick update, cause you probably.
Know your afterdate, correct?
Got it. So the last time we were here, we talked about, you know, who we were gonna be hiring, we were negotiating contracts, but all those have been put in place at this point. Um, we hired Ditesco, Ditesco, and Keith Meyer's here, he's the president, is our project manager. Keith, you wanna introduce your company?
Sure, sure. Uh, again, my name's Keith Meyer, um, I'm with Ditesco. We're a Northern Colorado program project management firm located in Fort Collins. We are, uh, we've done a lot of work in all of our Colorado communities in the water wastewater industry. Currently, we finished Evans wastewater plant here, about forty million dollar project a couple of weeks ago. Worked on Silver Canyon's expansion for the tri-districts, um, fifteen MTD expansion. We finished Waldo's expansion, well, their water plant a couple of years ago and their current wastewater plant expansion. So we collectively managed all of those projects and currently probably around two hundred million dollars of built, you know, water wastewater structure in northern Colorado, so happy to have an opportunity to work on this project. For our companies, if you can help with it, we look forward to it.
So they're our PM and they'll be managing the schedule, budget, whatnot. The first thing they've done is helped us issue an RFP for a contractor, that went out the day after Labor Day. So those are still out, we targeted Maltz, Garni, and Hydro to send those to. Um, it's a really tight market out there, cause you guys have probably heard, super tight. So we may have to make some adjustments to our RFP, we, we say not an aggressive RFP, we may have to dial it back a little bit, but I think the contractors are pretty interested, as long as we can get terms that people can live with. So, um, do you, are you familiar with any of those companies, Maltz, Hydro? Hydro's out of Fort Collins.
Hydro's out of Fort Collins, Maltz has an office here in Windsor, they're, uh, just out east, just about a mile north of the Great Western National Park site, they're headquartered in Salida. And then Garni Construction's in, uh, their, their western regional office is in Little.
And they're doing a pipeline right now between Boulder and Carter Lake or?
Yeah, Garni Construction is working, uh, one of their biggest projects in northern Colorado is twenty-two miles of groundwater pipeline off the St. Brain Canal, out kind of south end of Carter Lake Reservoir, um, to Boulder Reservoir. So, um, that's another project we're working on for Northern Water. Which, yeah, it's a big project that they're working on, about a forty million dollar pipeline.
One of the bits of feedback we're getting now, we're working with contractors now, so guess what? They need more time. So we wanted to have an aggressive schedule to get to an LOI quickly, like we talked about. One of the big messages we're getting back consistently from the market is, you just don't know how busy it is out here. And we like the project, but we'll have to do it on our schedule, so we may end up having to take a little longer, a couple of months longer perhaps, um, on getting their work done that gives us the information we need to inform the LOI they were talking about. So we'll see where that shakes out, but, you know, the market's the market. And I've talked to three engineers already and they all said the same thing, so it's very busy time. Anyway, but we are cranking along, um, so let's see, what else? Oh, we went in and hired a financial advisor, um, they're not gonna be the underwriter, they're just an FA with fiduciary duty to us, so they're not gonna be placing with that. It's Piper Jaffray, um, they've done a lot of work up here on different water projects over the years. Jonathan Hero is the managing director, he's the one working with us. And Ken, Jonathan, up here about two weeks ago, was meeting with Shane and Dean, and information started flowing between Dean and Piper, so we're, they're taking our model and adapting it to theirs and that's coming along. What else is going on?
Um, you know, we're just leveraging their experience in terms of debt service ratios, um, and done a number of projects with water, water facilities like this, so, you know, leveraging their information in terms of what you need from the revenue side and the information flow from Shane and your team has been very helpful in that. And they're helping us also refine kind of the cost analysis that's been put together, build that into the financial model so you can accurately compare it from a thousand gallons of tree water delivered. So looking forward to getting that refined and delivered instead of what you guys, to look at, so.
And lastly, at least, we, I think I told you last time, we're hiring Cuitac Rot to draft the commercial agreement, the LOI in this case. And they've given me, as of last Wednesday, I got the first draft of that LOI term sheet, so I'm going through it cause they got about half of it done and I have to fill in the other half. As soon as we get that into good shape, we'll be sending it on up here and you, you can have a crack at it. That partner there is named Michael Thomas and he's in their Denver office. So the meters are running. Um, oh, again, there's another one, Bishop Brogdon, which is our water resources engineer, actually delivered on Friday their report on the ability of the, um, infiltration galleries that we're talking about constructing to draw groundwater, which will then augment with ditch water. The ability of that aquifer to supply the amount of water that we'll need for our plant. We got that first desktop analysis back on Friday, so we're reviewing that now. We'll show that with you guys once we make sure they do the right things. But it looks like it'll be, you know, feasible, could be a combination of, of vertical wells and infiltration galleries. Uh, it could be the most efficient, cost-effective way, cause you want some redundancy out of that, but we'll see. But, so that's back as well, and that's gonna be important to supply to the, uh, contractors as they're putting their design together. And then lastly, um, we've been making sure we've started collecting environmental, um, assessments have been done on the site over the years. Cameron Cole is the consultant, we've been getting a lot of documentation from those guys. Um, we want to address some of the questions that were raised at our last meeting about constituent calls, about potential things that have happened there in the past. Anything that happens out there has to be reported, as I understand it, to either the federal, state, or local authorities, um, if they're just spill or whatever. So all that documentation we have, I mean, we're doing a review of, we haven't found anything yet. Anything that has happened has been documented, so we'll be sure to share that information. What we wanna do though is, once we get a better handle on it, we're gonna site the plant and Keith's firm will be working on that over the next couple of months. That will tell us where to site, where to site the well, we wanna drill a test well and test the water and get that, we'll have to do that anyway. So we almost, we almost drilled a well last week, just to respond to your questions, and we thought, eh, that's ten grand and maybe we should just wait till we know whether what, where we need to site it, so, um, we'll get that done and get the water samples taken and analyzed so that we can make sure everything comes in good. I mean, it's in our interest to do that.
So, are we gonna need to revise the current agreement that we have between us? To reflect what he just said, because there's gonna be a delay? This doesn't, it, it, cause I think that first agreement spelled out some very specific dates that were now gonna be.
September thirtieth.
So I think we'll need to change those accordingly.
So I, the last time we extended the dates, we reached, I reached out to Rick's lawyer for some, right? And we got it done. It's a one-page.
Okay.
It's not as bad as the scheduled delays, delays from the contractor remodeling their kitchen, but it's close.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's it, that's our quid pro.
Okay.
Is RO gonna be competitive?
It's the most expensive type of water treatment.
But we, we, HGR is an engineer working for us for most of twenty seventeen, um, and they gave us a class four cost estimate at the end of that. And the costs were coming in comparable to, um, the other suppliers that you have. We know we've gotta make, you know, cost effective, and if we thought it wasn't so far, we'll do something else. But it looks like it's coming in at a costly competitive with other suppliers.
I know, other areas, they go plants using RO along coast and stuff. And when the rains came back, the droughts, they, they blocked all, shut down.
Because they were, they were very expensive. No, absolutely, I totally agree, so, um, but it's what we have to use up here. And, um, you know, so far, so good, but yes, our eye is on that ball, for sure.
Um, I don't know if we can get upstairs, um, in a, if we have, cause I think the Kern meeting should take just a couple, it's pretty, or is there something specific that we have to talk about, so?
Couple minutes.
So if we, I mean, maybe if we have a couple of minutes before seven, do we wanna try to get that out of the way or wait and do it after the meeting?
Hey, it's your call, your honor.
Okay, well, let's see if we can get there, everybody might need a little, thank you, a little break, and then we'll get up there if we got, like.